Authority has now been adjourned. Okay. This is like a fast movie. Sorry about that again. So, Mr. Costin, you heading out?
I'm just gonna say-
Oh, you're fixing up something for me. Thank you. Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. All right. I'm now calling the Notaway County Board of Supervisors. March 16th, a regular meeting in the order. Before we do the invocation, I was hoping Reverend Hoag-
He's here.
Is he here? Where is he? Where is he hiding? Jim?
Yeah.
All right. Danny, you set us out a newspaper guy?
Well, Jesus had besides-
Oh, man. All right. Okay. That's a- Reverend, hold tight if you would. I want to- I just want to tell the public before we get started. I apologize for being late. We had a VDOT meeting at 6:00, and then we had their local re-authority authority, redevelopment authority meeting, and I've tried to stay on the close. We had a lot of business in that second meeting, so I apologize to you. Glad you're here tonight. Looking forward to a good meeting, and I'm looking forward to some good ideas and some comments tonight. With that said, I'm gonna turn the floor to Reverend Hoag. I know you have- we just talked about restoration ministries, where you rent a place out there. Before you get started, I do feel like the preachers and our churches and the fire departments, they're like the backbone of our community. And if you would, if you want to, tell us some a little bit about some of the projects you're working on, if you would, sir. Okay, we don't have to do that. Just say the prayer.
Why don't we just say the prayer and we do that next time?
Hold that thought, then. Let's do it. Thank you, sir.
Well, I come here tonight at the request of the Board of Supervisors and the Blackstone Ministerial Association. I'm here to share with you and pray with you. I will do both in that order. First, I'd like to share with you what I believe are healing words that need to be heard and heeded from Scripture. As I've come to these monthly gatherings, I've heard many citizens speak to this board, a board of men and women who are elected by the citizens of this county to conduct business for this county. They're here to guide the proceedings of this county as duly elected officials. They work on the issues of this county with little compensation and much consternation. They're here to listen to our concerns, find solutions to our problems, and plan for our future. They are not here, however, to be persecuted for their actions and their decisions. While they are required to give an account of their actions, they are not here to be given a shellacking from disquieted citizens who disagree with decisions that are made. While it makes interesting reading for our weekly paper, I'm certain that the editor can find other topics to excite his readers. It is our right, yes, it is our responsibility, to address this board when concerns arise. It is not our right to act rudely and disrespectfully. As our elected representatives, they deserve our respect. In the Apostle Paul's letter to the Church of Ephesus, he told them to speak the truth in love to one another. So may I suggest to all of us that we make sure that we have the truth before we speak, and then when we do, let's lay aside all bitterness and all evil speaking and speak to one another in love. Now receive the blessing. Now may the love of God and the grace of our Lord Jesus Christ and the fellowship of the Holy Spirit be with us all. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. We really appreciate that. We needed it. I understand, sir. Thank you so much. You did your part, and I appreciate it. All right, we gave honor to God. Let's give honor to the country. Could you stand up and pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. If you are- if you've never been here before, if you have, I'm hoping there's an agenda back there so you can follow along what we're doing tonight. The next one on the agenda is for the approval of the agenda itself. Can I get a motion, right? Yeah, I've got an amendment.
If I may, for the public record, we had to add two items after the agenda went out to the board. The first item would be found at E. It'll become E1. It is a public hearing, a special exception for a manufactured home. The applicant is Mr. Bathbrotner. And then also add under new business, item J5, a resolution regarding opioid litigation settlement.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve with the noted amendments.
All right. I got a- thank you, Mr. Roy. I got a motion to approve the agenda with the amendments that was brought by Mr. Costin. Can I get a proper second?
Second.
All right, hearing a second over there from Mr. Vaughn. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Motion carried. Little something different tonight, but it's little something different, but it's needed to be done, and it's big. So I asked the board if they could turn the mics off, and we're gonna go to the front. And I asked Crystal Smith, the resident administrator from VDOT, and also her team to come up front as well, if they would. Now I get to kind of get a feeling of what you feel like sometimes. But anyway, I wanted to face you and get a little closer to you because we are a tight-knit family here in Notaway. And if I can't make it, I'm gonna pull for the vice chairman. He's gotta do something tonight. All right, this is a resolution. And in the resolution that the Notaway County, we lost Curtis O. Shepherd, and I'm just gonna call him Shep in this resolution, but it's not written that way because that's how I knew him. That's how we all knew him. And it was a terrible loss for this whole county. And people ask me, well, why are you bringing the whole board front? Well, he worked all over the county, okay? You could make a phone call, and he- and he- and I thought, when Lee Roberts died, I said, who is gonna fill those shoes? Well, he did a fine job with that. And then we suffered another loss. So with that, and I'll read this from the board. Whereas Shep began his service to Notaway County as a full-time highway equipment operator A with the Virginia Department of Transportation on April 1st, 1981, and whereas he continued to serve through promotions to maintenance supervisor in 1992, and then to maintenance superintendent in 2015, and whereas he was knowledgeable about Notaway County and attuned to its needs and the needs of the citizens and the traveling public, going above and beyond duty, especially during adverse weather events, and whereas the extraordinary knowledge and skill he used on the job was proven, went on display at over 25 annual Virginia Department of Transportation rodeos, and I've heard of those, placing over a dozen times, and whereas Shep dedicated over four decades of experience, reliability, and valuable knowledge, and dedicated service to the citizens of Notaway County. Now, therefore, to be resolved that the Notaway County Board of Supervisors does hereby express its profound appreciation for the contributions Shep made to Notaway County, and it further resolve that the Notaway County Board of Supervisors directs a copy of this resolution be shared with the Virginia Department of Transportation, who is standing behind me, headquarters, residency, district, and central offices serving Notaway County, and to be further resolved that Notaway County Board of Supervisors, on behalf of the citizens of Notaway County, offers its sincerest condolences to the family of Shep, done this 16th of March, 2023, by unanimous board, signed Chairman Steve Vaughn. With that said, I'm going to yield to Ms. Smith, please.
Good evening. I would just ask the family if they would please come up. We have a little presentation we would also like to provide. Dustin, Audrey, and the rest of the family that's here, come on up. So tonight, we would like to present to the family the Virginia State flag. This flag was flown over the governor's mansion on January 29th, 2023, the day that Shep left this world and went to his forever home. And we just- we want to thank the family for their sacrifices as well. I know when you work for a state agency like that, it is not just the employee that sacrifices and provides to the public. Their family is also affected. And we want to thank them for the 42, nearly 42 years of service that Shep provided to the Commonwealth of Virginia and the citizens of Notaway County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. If y'all will not get a picture, if you would, put everybody up if you would.
If you could stay up here.
Y'all could huddle back to where you were. That was a good angle there. Steve and I could turn you guys.
All right. Y'all get- the family get up front.
No, if y'all could get in here, here.
Okay. That's all right.
Get up. We're gonna have to try and confine this to the chairman. Audrey, yeah, there you go. There you go. There you go. Get a little closer together.
I can't see because I've still got my reed glasses.
That's all right.
That's right.
Looking good right here on three. Looking great here on three. Y'all get in close together. One, yeah, absolutely. Looking great again here on three. One, two, and three. Hold that pose. One, two, and three. Even Steve looks good.
Thank you. Thank you. Y'all give the family a big hand. All right, mics back up, please. Good. Thank you. Thank y'all. Thank you for that time. And, you know, he was one of our family, so it's tough. But with that said, and thank you to the family and everyone who came tonight. Following the agenda, I like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes. I think it was January 25th, work session on February 9th, 2023, in a regular monthly meeting, February 16th, 2023. All right, we got a motion from Mr. Vaughn to receive and adopt the minutes that's been presented. Any- can I get a second?
Second.
All right, I got a second. I'm gonna give that one to Helen. I think she's a little quicker than you, Miss.
She was.
All right, I got a second. All right. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none. All in favor, six, five, by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right. Now we got time for the delegations of the public. We do have three people who signed up tonight. Now I got a little taste of what y'all go through at that mic and everything. So anyway, it's a little different feeling when you get down the floor. First one is Mr. Sonny Abbott, District 2, at Little Creek Road. Thank you for coming, Mr. Abbott, tonight.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Costin, fellow citizens. A solid waste study is in progress of being developed. At some point, the contract award winner will provide suggestions to resolve found issues. Now, here's a suggestion in advance for free. Provide a plastic or plastic containers at each solid waste site. Require citizens to notify the attendant at the solid waste sites and have the attendant confirm that only plastic is being deposited in the container. Locate a firm that would collect the plastic for free. There was a collection point in Farmville at one time. However, it was removed because people threw in trash at the unattended collection point. Having the attendants confirm only plastic is being deposited would mitigate that issue. A potential contact number for plastic removal is 434-392-3331. Yep, it will take containers. Some work to secure a firm that wants free materials since removing and since removing a substantial amount of plastic would create a difference at the landfill, I suggest it be undertaken. If a firm can't be found, I just forget this suggestion. Now, the budget process seems to be different again this year. I believe we hear more about what will generate revenue for the county rather than what taxpayer dollars are being used to cover. The revenue stream has involved water and solar. Both of these seem to be outside the wishes of the towns and the community itself. A tax increase has been mentioned, although this is an election year, and raising taxes generally isn't considered by those running for office. However, the county continues to spend substantial sums of money for items of unknown value. The county spent in excess of $100,000 on the Davenport study relating to the school system. What were the expectations when the proposal to spend that much money was developed? What was expected? Was it expected that they wouldn't recommend spending a sizable amount to improve what they reviewed? Was it expected that knowing how good or bad things were would make decisions easier for either board? Was it expected that these findings wouldn't be understood by the school system, and they wouldn't request budget increases to address findings? Was it expected that Davenport would find a substantial amount of misused money? Was it expected that monies would be readily available to meet all or part of any requests made by the school based on Davenport's findings? Were our expectations met? If we didn't have any expectations, did we anticipate how the results would be used when presented? And finally, the county is targeted to spend more in legal services this fiscal year than all of the monies budgeted for fiscal years from 2012 through 2022. That $100,000 budgeted this fiscal year might cover 50% of the total cost for this fiscal year. Shouldn't there be a focus on how to reduce these costs versus boosting the amount budgeted? If we understand all of the reasons necessary for these services, is it possible some could be reduced or eliminated? And I want to thank the board again for its consideration and willingness to respond. Thank you, sir.
Ms. Abbott, could you stay there for a few minutes for a point of clarification, if you would? Does anybody in the board have a point of clarification? Do you have something, Mrs. Shepherd?
I have a question.
You have a question? That's fine. You'll be okay with that, sir?
I'm fine.
Okay.
Did we actually spend $100,000 on the Davenport study for the school?
No, ma'am. I made a note to pull the figures for you, but I'll get that information to the board as well as Ms. Abbott.
Mr. Chairman, I believe what you may be talking about, the school did their own studies. I believe it was either $113,000 or $123,000. That was separate from the Davenport study that this board paid for.
The facility study?
What?
The facility study?
Yeah, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, it was two separate things. They did- well, I don't know who they used, but we used Davenport for the financial study.
Mosley Architects, $119,000.
Mosley. Okay. All right. Any other- you got anything else?
The only other thing is, Mr. Abbott asked about legal. Mr. Abbott, just to your point, I had actually emailed and asked for a discussion about legal, but it wasn't added to the agenda for some reason.
Yeah, so we recognize that, very much so. We recognize that in the budget process, so that will be a discussion further coming in the future. And so the board does recognize that. I want to back up and stop- let's go back to solid waste a little bit. So, Mr. Abbott, I'm thinking of how your thought pattern here. So what you're thinking is, let's just put- let's dip our toe in the water a little bit. In other words, if we can find a firm to put a just-for-plastic, and you got the attendant there, and let's say we just do it at 7:23, you're saying is, if you get that program going, that would save you on landfill, room, and all that kind of stuff, because plastics don't really shrink the soda gag on much, too.
At one time, and it's been a while back, I made the suggestion that if 100 families in Notaway County saved one cubic yard of plastic, and many of you know, I'm not in charge at my house.
Listen, everybody, all the men, raise your hand if you're not in charge of your house. Okay, a lot of people support you. The sheriff had his high.
I tried to follow those instructions.
Right.
And we collected plastic. We separated it from our regular trash, took it to Farmville, and put it in that container. That's where that phone number comes from that I referenced.
Right.
That reduced, from the Abbott household, some space at the landfill. But if 100 families did that, that'd be 100 cubic yards of space available at the landfill. Now, that container was available for years in Farmville until people just threw their trash in there instead of just plastic. Now, the containers that I'm referring to would be a smaller container. At many of our sites, we have those containers that you put materials in that you want to go to for those who could be in need, something that size. But a firm would come and pick it up, take it away, but since we have a person at all of those sites, it just requires the citizen to make that person aware that's in charge that day at the site, that they're only putting plastic in the container.
Right.
And if we have a firm that takes it away, it could reduce the volume of material at the landfill. And in your package, you'll note, month after month, landfill amount of trash is larger.
Yes, you're the one. And you're not talking about- I know plastics is not a weight, a lot of weight, and there's not any money in it, but it does take up room in the landfill.
Size.
Very size, yeah. I got you. Okay, good point. So we'll take a look at that. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Let me- I'm sorry, I'm still following the delegations of the public. Ms. Daphne Norton from Bible Way Road, I think District 3. Thank you, Ms. Norton, for coming. Thank you, Mr. Abbott. Appreciate that.
One more week and the cane's gone. It's not a weapon, Robert. It's been a while since I've been before you. Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Chairman, Mr. Costin. I've been away a while because I was taking care of family with medical needs, but I have followed, and I still care. And I'm a numbers person. Y'all know that. It's budget time. I was able to attend the budget work session the other night. And the funding you approved now would carry us into 2024 with the same huge projects asked. It's a lot on the plate, on the table, that will affect all of our pocketbooks. And as the local economy and the nation's economy continue to spiral, that is of great The general population at large do not realize that the amount of money that's already earmarked by state. And I believe I'm correct, the other night, the total amount for '24 is around $50 million. Considering we don't have a large pool of continuous revenue streams, it leaves little leeway for special projects and additional ask. We'll be doing good, I think, from looking at this budget to pay for what we need. My question is, to clarify some things for myself and maybe the public, do you happen to know the percentage of the entire county budget that is state-funded, and what percentage is state-mandated? I, over the years, have learned, like y'all have, so many things are state-mandated, so that ties up our money. And the folks that want all these big projects, it's just not available. We can't compete like the schools. We love our teachers, but we can't compete with the salaries because we don't have the revenue stream that the cities do. But I just want- would like to clarify those percentages, so it'll leave a true value of what you have to deal with, and it'll show people that that is not a lot. And after watching last month's board meeting in the lines of budget, I have a few questions relating to attorney fees, because I see that in this year's budget, it's quarter million dollars. Never in the past have we ever spent money like that. And after watching the video, I was caught off guard to hear that the chair stated that the board agreed for a supervisor to accompany Mr. Costin for the purposes of resolving town and Notaway County water issues between the towns. But only moments later, it was confirmed that the board was unaware of the two-person task force created by Mr. Costin until such time it was brought to their attention. So as a result of this dialogue, it was revealed to the public that a supervisor with knowledge of the administrator sought and received an agreement from a law firm other than our retained law firm, retaining their services at a cost that amounted to about $130,000 a year. So the citizens of Notaway can request a copy of this agreement to see for yourself. There are no rates per hour, no defined scope, and what was expected outcome. And as I rewatched the video and listened carefully to the reactions of the supervisor, the question for me was, what does the rules and regulations say? I'm a rules person. And I referred to the Code of Virginia and a manual about spending taxpayers' money, and it says, "When a single supervisor takes it upon themselves to discuss outside of the board's purview, can we overstep our authority as a board member?" And on page 34 of the manual, it says, and I quote, "From the power to tax, appropriate, and spend, revenues that are thus collected cannot be spent without a specific appropriation of funds by the board. No money may be paid out for any expenditure unless and until the governing body has made an appropriation for the expenditure." So as it appears, the current budget is almost exhausted, so I'm wondering how we can commit perhaps another $130,000. And I realize that this agreement was not acted upon, but what concerns me was the potential that it could have been without the monies being appropriated.
Okay.
And I just encourage you, as a citizen, to pay close attention this year. I mean, y'all all know what the world's coming to, and I will mention that 12 farms in our county right now, and I have a vested interest in one of them, that's my son, they've lost their jobs because Tyson closed down. 12 farms. That's gonna amount to about $4 million of your money. So we gotta pay attention to what we're spending. We can't do all these fluffy things we want to do. I mean, animal control, that's great, but 2.6 million, that's a little excessive. And there's a lot more that I could say, but I just ask you, beseech you, to pay close attention, because there's a lot of big issues at hand.
Okay. Ms. Norton, if you would, if you stand- we may have some point of clarification, any questions to clarify, anything? I just want to do a point of clarification. The 200- I think you said a quarter million dollars for the legal fees. It was suggested by staff. The board has not approved that. I just want to make sure, but it was suggested by staff. I hear you. Okay? Thank you. All right. All right. Thank you, Ms. Norton. I got Ms. Yates now from Tennessee Avenue and Crew, District 2, possibly. People who don't know that, when we did the voting, changed- Crew kind of got changed, switched that, so I think that might be in John's district, is it?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Don't you touch it? Okay. All right, we might have to put in the budget, Ms. Norton, get a new microphone for us over there, okay? No, go ahead, Ms. Yates. I apologize.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Administrator Costin.
Good evening.
I'd like to begin my remarks this evening by reiterating my comments from last month's board meeting regarding 2022 raises without reviews for government employees and going on the record that Mr. Costin is not the right man for the job. I submit, Mr. Costin does not have the skills needed to serve this county in his current capacity, and offer as proof the fact that he could not tell the board how much we have spent year-to-date with Sands Anderson, yet he is budgeting a quarter of a million dollars for next year. for next year. We are not a rich county. The per capita income is $26,000. Our poverty level is 21%, and we are sixth highest in poverty in the state of Virginia. Yet you, Mr. Costin, Mr. Costin?
Yes, ma'am.
Want to give local government employees another raise of 5% while many employees in this administration are making three times what the average citizen who pays these salaries makes. Mr. Costin, is there a reason that you are either unable or unwilling to look at me, the speaker, when you are specifically being addressed?
I apologize. I didn't know you were speaking. Time out for a minute, let me clarify something, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt you. I've gotten criticized for that, too, and I want to tell the public, you know, like Ms. Norton was talking to me, Mr. Abbott talked about trash, I do write down notes, and he is writing down notes, as I am, too, so we apologize, but sometime-
I would be more than happy to supply everyone with a copy-
Oh, okay, all right, well, thank you.
Of what I-
Making it easy for us, so we apologize.
Okay, is that okay?
Thanks, Ms. Yates.
I always come with three copies.
I'm sorry to stop you, I just want to, because I've heard that before, you know.
I appreciate that. Mr. Costin, please explain why you hired a planning administrator with no proper ordinances in place. Why have you not completed the ordinances, job descriptions, and employee reviews? What are your expectations of this man, knowing that you have rendered him almost useless without the appropriate ordinances in place? You have been here over one year. You are setting a precedent that has never been established here before regarding raises. I do not begrudge the employees, they are wonderful and loyal. This is all about Mr. Costin's lack of good judgment and leadership skills. Supervisors, you need to hold him accountable. Mr. Costin?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you please advise why we paid Sands Anderson to write a 30-page questionnaire, and how much did that cost the taxpayers? Was this questionnaire part of a future review process? Aren't there companies who have personal improvement/review packages that can be purchased cheaper than having Sands Anderson reinvent the wheel at our expense? Mr. Costin, can you please explain what a new performance and evaluation system means? Is that software that employees log into? I realize you have not worked in the private sector much, but most companies who have to make profit to stay afloat still use pen and paper. This level of spending is unsustainable. We are not Fairfax, Alexandria, or Arlington. We are Notaway, and we can't afford a tax-and-spend administrator. I submit to every supervisor on this board that Mr. Ted Costin does not possess the qualifications and leadership abilities needed to serve this county as administrator. He is draining our bank accounts. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I have that comments there, please, Ms. Yates? Any point of clarification, anybody want to say anything? Ms., I'll say this, so the board, I mean, sometimes that gets, that's not really understood, but I need to make sure we understand, I want the citizens to leave. The county administrator works under the pleasure of the board, and technically, you really held, you're holding us accountable, too, okay? I just want to make sure you understand it.
And, you know, I've learned a lot since I sat on council last year with the Town of Crew, and I really understand that, but in truth, while we do hold you accountable, we must hold him accountable, too, because he's the one that you guys put in place to keep you on the path. Because you guys aren't educated in what he's educated in, does that make sense?
I understand that, I get it.
So, if he's not giving you good leadership, then you guys are all floundering.
Right.
And it's not a good place to be.
Yeah, I went to a, I went to a, I went to a leadership in the board of supervisors, and an example, I think, that someone had given me was, which I thought it kind of, you know, you gotta, you gotta tell, say simple things to a guy who's a simple guy. The county administrator is the pilot, per se, and we're the navigators, trying to tell them which way to go, you know? But the problem is, he don't have one navigator, he's got five. So that's where it gets tricky, but anyway, anyway.
Unless he's allowing you, you're-
I understand that.
-to cut you off the path.
Right, but, yeah, I get, I hear you. Thank you, ma'am, thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Hey, I just had two quick things. Ms. Yates, it sounded like most of your questions was coming off that to-do list, is that correct? Some of your questions was coming off of our to-do list, is that correct?
Yes, yes, sir, that's correct.
Okay. The other thing I have is, Mr. Chairman, I want to clarify something. You and I had a conversation, and I think, as you expressed it to me, that there may have been some concern, that some board members felt like Ms. Yates was speaking for me.
Yes, I have said that to you.
Okay, so if it's okay with you, and I hate to put you on the spot like it's Ms. Yates, but do you speak for me?
Absolutely not. If anybody here, and I think you all do, know about me and who I am, there is nobody that I speak for. I speak for myself and what I see, and my goal is to make it better for the citizens. I have called, and I think you can remember times when I have called you out-
Yes, ma'am.
-and, in not, in non-agreement with you. So absolutely not, everything I write, everything I think, is from me, and I want you all to know that.
Okay, and I've made that accusation, and I apologize for you, Mrs.-
Well, it's okay, but a follower, I'm not.
I got you. All right, yeah, I believe that for some reason, I don't know.
I don't know why.
All right, hey, good stuff, thank you for the public, and if anyone here has never made comments to the public, I do look forward to that and listening to what you have to say, and get your ideas, because that's what we're here about, you know? I kind of left that out, we're navigators, but you guys are the, y'all are the taxpayers that's on the plane with us, you understand what I'm saying? So we need to be navigating in the right direction, because you're paying the bill. So anyway, all right, I left that part out, very important part. All right, I was gonna say, who's next, but that's up to me, isn't it? All right, thank you, guys. Presentations, we don't have any tonight, correct? So-
Public hearing.
Oh, skip the public hearings, thank you, sir, thank you, thank you, Mr. Costin. Would you mind, would you mind, Mr. Costin, to introduce us, the public hearing?
This is a special exception for a manufactured home. It was heard Tuesday night by the Planning Commission, which acted favorably in recommending it favorably to you. Mr. Zodi, would you come forward and present the case, please?
Okay, good evening.
Good evening.
All supervisors, excuse me. What you have before you is a special exception request. This property is located just west of Randolph Mill Road at Crystal Lake. The applicant is seeking to combine two existing lots, they're both pre-existing, non-conforming lots, and they're combining the two lots, I believe 34 and 35. One is 0.23 acres, 0.27 acres, excuse me, and the other is 0.53 acres. They're combining them, so in order to place a manufactured home on the lots. Division 3, application interpretation of the zoning ordinance, item 1-3-7 permits the combination of lots to bring it to conformity, this is getting it closer to conformity. The minimum lots size, minimum standard in the C1 district, or Conservation District, is two acres. And my philosophy as a planner is, what we strive to do, what I strive to do, is bring it closer to compliance. Sometimes it's impossible, given that it's an old subdivision of sorts, and the lots are very narrow, and it'd be impossible for most people to be able to site a structure, a residential or an accessory structure on the site. So I just want to kind of get that out of the way. What they, as I said, they want to place a manufactured home on the two combined parcels, that's already been recorded, I signed off on that about two weeks ago, because I'm a subdivision agent. And I do want to say, we, while it wasn't on the board's agenda, I did send out adjacent property notifications to all the property owners on March 3, and that cited both the Planning Commission public hearing, as well as the boards, and it's also part of the legal advertisement that went out earlier this month. So I just wanted to clarify that, in case there was any ambiguity about that. Nevertheless, staff has not received any comments from adjacent property owners, nor have I received any telephone calls inquiring about this special exception request. After responding to the 37 findings of fact that are required for rezonings and special exceptions, it was clear that this is a suitable use for this property. We are fulfilling somewhat of a housing need, and I think it's worthy of approval. The Planning Commission agreed with a vote of 701, one abstention, and I just want to go ahead and give you the conditions that was approved by the Planning Commission at their meeting. I think I cut my paperwork down. Okay, number one condition, this special exception is granted for the placement of a manufactured home. Number two, this special exception may be revoked by Notaway County or by its designated agent for failure to comply with any of the listed or amended conditions made by staff, the Planning Commission, and/or board supervisors. Three, secure driveway permit from the Virginia Department of Transportation if required. Now, before I conclude, I do want to point out that Mr. Henson, with VDOT, did respond when I sent him the application, which is typical, and he had no issues with the request. Secondly, they did get a revised SEPIC and WELL permit from the Department of Health, and I have that documentation in as well. So that concludes staff's presentation to the board.
Now, thank you, Mr. Zodi, if you don't mind, before I open, anybody got any questions to ask, and first, all right, before I get a motion to open the public hearing, do you mind having a seat and being on standby to answer any questions, sir?
I will, sir.
All right, thank you. All right, I'm entertaining a motion to open the public hearing. All right, got a motion, Mr. Vaughn, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, Ms. Shackleton, I got a second from her, can, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We are now in a open session, we are now opening up the public hearing, excuse me. John just laughed, he just tickled it. So do I have anybody here to speak for this special exception? And I don't see, is Mr. Fath Bruckner here?
He's right there.
Oh, he is. Do you want to say anything, sir?
What do I need to say?
Y'all give a big hand on that. It's-
I've jumped all the hoops and crossed all the paths and dotted all the i's.
All right. So everybody, the public can hear, thank you, sir, thank you for saying that. I didn't ask him to come up front, but he says, look, what does it need to say? I just wanted to make sure that the crowd hears that this, that's at home. So anyway, all right, is anybody here to speak against it? Okay, all right, hearing anything, and thank you, Mr. Bruckner, I appreciate that you made your comments tonight. So with that said, can I get a, can I get a motion to go back, to close the public hearing?
Some move.
Second.
For him.
All right, I'm gonna give it to John on that one, and a second, Mr. Vaughn, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Anything else you want to comment, Mr. Zodi?
Mr. Sir, just to let Mr. Fath Bruckner know that I'll send him a letter of approval with the conditions-
Okay.
-tomorrow.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zodi, and Mr. Fath Bruckner. With that said, I need a motion to approve the special exception.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the application for property owner Mark and Alexis Fath Bruckner at 3597 Sella Creek Road, Blackstone, Virginia, for a site located to the south of 331 Randolph Mill Road, subject to the conditions listed.
All right, I have a motion from Mr. Roach on that, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, thank you, Ms. Simmons. All right, got a motion, and a properly second, any further discussion? And I think there was some good special, special conditions in there, so I appreciate it, sir. All right, hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Mr. Fath Bruckner, your work is done. Now, he's clapping for himself. Thank you.
Actually, it's just beginning now.
Yeah, right, really, really, that's all right. All right, thank you, sir. Thank you, too, Mr. Zodi. All right, any presentations tonight? Seeing none, I'm-
That's all.
Okay, all right, departmental reports, Virginia Department of Transportation, I guess it'll be Diana Bryant tonight, Assistant Residency Administrator, and I want to tell, kudos to the VDOT team, that they held it together, because I know it was hard, but kudos to all your work, and thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it.
Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Costin.
Good evening.
I wanted to give you a few updates in addition to the report that's in your packet. The Route 46 bridge, we don't have anything additional on that, so there's no new update for that bridge. The two-week look-ahead schedules, I'll continue to send those to you as I get them. If you don't get a schedule each week, then that means there was no change from the week prior to that. The study is complete on Route 625 East Courthouse Road. We did receive some warning sign recommendations to be posted out there, so we'll be installing those within the next month or so. We've got a lot of signs to go up, but we did get some warning signs, they will be installed.
Thank you.
Yes. I called our signal section for an update on the signal replacements in the Town of Crew for Route 49 and 460, and as of 5 o'clock today, I didn't get an update, but I will provide that to you as soon as I do. I know I haven't got anything in the last couple of months. The Route 611 structure that we've talked about over the last couple of months, we did do a little bit of work out there to open up one of the pipes, but there is a bigger problem out there. There's a utility that has to be moved before we can complete it, and in order for that silt to be removed from the inlet and the outlet end of those pipes, we're gonna have to close that road for probably three to four weeks. And as soon as we get clearance from our structure and bridge section that the utilities have been moved, we'll notify the county in plenty of time, and that road will be closed, and we'll get that silt removed from that structure. I wanted to thank Mr. Costin, we've had some issues there at the landfill, and he's worked diligently to come to a resolution that's worked for all of us, so we wanted to thank you for helping us out with that. Let's see, and I did want to ask, after the work session that we had earlier, that the board entertained having a public hearing for the secondary six-year plan at the May meeting.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that is item J2 on your agenda.
All right.
And the last thing that I have, a reminder for the public hearing for the roundabout at Fort Pickett will be held at the Blackstone Primary School on the 30th, from 5 to 7 p.m.
Okay.
That's all that I have.
All right. Anybody got any further questions on Ms. Bryant?
I do not.
Okay. But, Ms. Bryant, if you and Ms. Smith don't want, I'm pretty, I'm not, when you're dealing with the board of supervisors, it's like herding cats, I don't, but I don't see any problem, we will be able to set for that for May meeting, so if you ladies don't want to stay, and, I wrote his name down, let me see if I'm, see how good I am. No, I can't find it now.
Aaron.
Aaron, okay, I am not calling you lady friend, I'm sorry. But, but look, if y'all don't want to stay, we'll set, but we'll look forward to setting it at the May meeting. My question is, should it be an hour ahead, I mean, because we usually have LRA, and we gotta be thinking about that, do we need to do the LRA another time because of it? That's the thing I'm concerned about. You see what I'm saying?
No, it's not at the regular meeting.
Okay, oh, not before the meeting, but the regular meeting, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Just my brain did, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Ms. Bryant.
You're welcome.
Okay, all right, thank you so much. All right.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming. All right, solid waste, anything, Mr. Nobody's here for that. Nothing but animal control, Piedmont Health District, Notaway County Public Library, Emergency Services, Buddy, thank you. Oops, did I skip, oh, oh, School Board, Dr. Grimes.
School Board.
All right, and his first name's Heather?
Yes.
Finance Director for the School Board, last name?
Meyer.
Ah, I was close, I started to call you Aaron, no, I was just messing with her. Thank you, Heather, thank you for coming tonight. Do you have anything right now?
I don't.
Okay, thank you, ma'am, appreciate it. Sorry, buddy, I got off track again.
I didn't see Heather either, I didn't want to cut in front of her. Mr. Chair, members of the board, Mr. Costin, staff, citizens, good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My report, as always, is in your packets, quite a bit on it, I think it's two or three pages there, but if you have any questions, I'm here for that tonight, but just I wanted to highlight three things in that report, just special emphasis, and that way the public that's listening tonight as well. This communication system, RFP, we're really excited about it, it went out on February 28th. We're expecting the, the deadline is May 31 for vendors to submit their proposals back to Notaway County. We have a 12-person committee, it's all-inclusive of all the stakeholders, police, fire, and EMS, as well as some staff members, finance, and we will be doing our review, once they turn that in, May 31, we'll be doing our review for the next month or so after that. And we're hoping that if everything's positive, we'll be coming back to you and looking at maybe, you know, setting up a contract with a selected vendor in October 2023. So that's exciting news. The continued work goes on with the EOP, I'm still pushing hard to get that to you next month.
Right.
And today, I received the Virginia Cooperative Extension Section, which is dealing with agriculture and natural resources, in case there's damage during a- with agriculture and natural resources, in case there's damage during a hurricane like we had in Irene, that laid over a lot of tobacco. That's a really important section, so VCE, Virginia Cooperative Extension, submitted that today. I'm still working with VDOT and working with Social Services on their sections. And then the last bullet that I wanted to put special emphasis on in your report is Department of Military Affairs reached out to me, and we're honored they did, to help with the Fort Pickett, the Fort Barfoot Ceremony, renaming ceremony, to where we're gonna involve all of our emergency service agencies. So, it's really good to know that Burkeville will be providing ambulance, Nottaway Emergency Squad will be providing ambulance, Crew Fire Department will be providing people for the medical response tent, and Blackstone Fire Department will be providing personnel for the tent, as well as a fire engine, we're hoping, if their availability is there, but they all four will be there in some capacity or another, just to help stand by during the ceremony.
Okay, I got it.
And that's all I have, any questions?
I don't have any questions, I just want to, you know, let the board, let the public know a little bit. We did at a work session ask, you know, because I did hear somebody say, you know, it's election year, you don't look at taxes, but let me tell you something, we are not, we're not funding enough to our emergency services, would that be a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
That's a very fair statement. So, and, and, and Mr. Hyde did give us some ideas, like, you know, maybe, you know, a certain cent tax, but that's earmarked, the real estate tax, that's earmarked for emergency services. What I don't like about that, okay, so this is a debatable issue, but, so, here's, I'm not trying to make an issue that's not an issue, but we do know we do have an issue, we're not paying them enough, and where are we gonna get the money? Okay, so, what I don't like about that, if I own 100 acres of land, and Ms. Shackleton owns 10 acres of land, and you go up three cent, I'm paying more money to emergency services than she's paying, but I got one house, and she's got one house. That bothers me, okay? So, can we do a dwelling tax, you know, but I'm just telling you, that don't seem fair to me. And by the way, I'm talking to, I'm not talking to Buddy, Buddy, you can sit back down now, you're fine. He's not into that, but I just want the public to know the problem with that, you know, because we gotta make some tough decisions, because we're not paying them enough, I mean, there's not enough money in their budget, and they're going, their budget's going down, and we have got to figure it out, and we're gonna have to hear that from the public, what we need to do. But, but another person might come and say, well, Steve, you ain't think about this? That's fine, and, but, but it just bothers me, so I just want to share that with the public. But you're right, we're not gonna get that done this year, but it won't, nothing to do with the election. I'm looking at Sonny Evans. All right, but anyway, planning and economic development, Mr. Zodi, I love hearing from you, the tall guy.
Don't put me next to my brothers, I'm the runner of the family.
Oh, really?
Yes, sir. Still Obama's favorite middle son. But anyway, I really, I really had no significant, well, I had some additions. I do want to point out, at our Planning Commission meeting last Tuesday night, Melody Foster, the Executive Director for the Commonwealth Regional Council, presented some alternative language for the solar, for, for the solar section in our comprehensive plan, the drive comprehensive plan, and I just want to be aware of that, and if y'all don't have that, I will make sure you get that tomorrow. I'd like to give it to you all before we post on the website, I would, I think it's transparent for us to do that, to show what alternative language is being suggested. That's the first thing. The second thing is, we've, we had our first zoning ordinance committee meeting last Tuesday at 6:00, the esteemed Chair is Mr. Perry, and then is on it, but Mr. Bowen is on as well, and Ms. Pettis is on it, and Jeff Lovell, and so, right now, I've already given them some information, well, we went over several things that are statutory, because I want to address the statutory requirements for the, from the Code of Virginia, so we're up to date, because we are way out of date with several things. And so, we covered one, two, three sections, and one of the things that we won't, four sections actually, one thing we won't have to address is the flood payment, because we already did that last year. So, this is gonna be a long process, it's, right now, it's easy, because I'm just inserting statutory language into the zoning ordinance to update it, because like, for instance, border zone appeals, way out of date, they made changes, I would say, eight years ago, seven or eight years ago, and it's not in our ordinance. And there are several other minor things, but the BZI, to me, is one of the larger things, and conditional zoning, because conditional zoning, they don't really, we don't really speak to proffers a lot in our existing ordinance, but this update from the state addresses those, those gaps, which are, in my opinion, tremendous. But I just wanted to let y'all know, I do have a tracking sheet, and we're going to hopefully be through with the statutory requirements, and then we can get into the nitty-gritty, the agricultural district, conservation district, and all those, lot sizes permitted uses, I have my own opinions, and I really want to hear Ms. Pettis, what Ms. Pettis has to say about this as well, because she's a new member, and it gives us, I think, a great opportunity to hear what people outside of our regulatory bubble don't always see. And I'd last, lastly, I just want to point out that I am participating in a Southern Virginia tour with the Tobacco Commission, and one of the sites we're gonna see is here at Pickett Park, or eventually Pickett Barefoot.
Barfoot.
Barfoot Park.
Well, let me, please, let me interrupt if I may.
No, it's fine, we gotta get it right.
We have been approached by the commander out at what is today Fort Pickett, will be on, you know, Friday next week, Fort Barfoot, about consideration of changing the names of streets and signage that's out there, consideration. This has not been brought to the authority, it has not been brought to the board. I have been working it as trying to get facts and data and information. For example, the Department of Defense will pay for any changes that are made out there. What changes would have to be made? That's been presented earlier this evening by Mr. Hawkins, in terms of signage and the expense that might be associated with that. Okay, it has not been brought to the authority, it has not been brought to the board. So, I'd like to put an end to the rumor that Pickett Park is changing its name, it's, it's not, it may happen, it just hasn't been presented to the authority or the board to make that decision yet. It's, it's an informational exercise that's going on at this time. It's Fort Barfoot, in the, in the near, very near future, it will remain Pickett Park until the authority or the board decides that they want to do something different. I hope that clears it up for everybody.
So, what we're gonna do, one of the things we're doing, one of the sites we're seeing, I'm gonna lead the tour, is at the FDC site, Fred Circle's business, and just look at the building, because it, there's some issues there, and then they're gonna head over to Southside Community College to look at some of their facilities and discuss their programs. So, that's really all my report, but I just wanted to let you all know about that.
Okay.
Because I think that's important. I was supposed to go to VADAC, the Virginia Department of Agricultural Services, on March 30th, but they canceled, so hopefully we'll be meeting later in the, in the month, well, next two months, that's all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Zodi. And I'm just talking, you can sit, you can sit down, this is not a question to you. So, the Planning Commission, we had to wait a while to get a quorum, okay? So, I had some good discussions with some of the public that was here to listen to the Planning Commission, and about solar power. So, board members, you know, the April 13th work session is coming up, we've already got on the work session, it's at 6:30, April 13th, we already got on there, animal control, I believe. When I did the, when I did the town hall meeting, I guess that's what I called it, a while back, in District 1, we had some people that showed there, they gave a really good presentation, well, they requested this, you, you, none of y'all were at that, that town hall meeting, and, and they would like for y'all to see that presentation about the solar that we have in the, in the county and that kind of thing. Would y'all be okay if I added that to that work session?
Yes.
Be okay, would that be all right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think, let's do the, the animal control might go a little bit longer, let's, let's do the, if it would, I'll put Mr. Costin ahead on the, on the agenda, the solar first, it's 6:30, April 13th, and I, and I want to apologize to some of them in this courtroom, and I don't want to look at them when I apologize, because I'm embarrassed. I, I think I accidentally nicknamed them the non-solar people, and that's, that's not good to name somebody. Anyway, they're good people, and they got, and they, and they are really, they really have done their homework, okay? Really have done their homework, and they give suggestions of other, other counties and some of the ordinances they have, so I just wanted to share that with you, so, and make sure that this board is okay with that. I mean, and it's not all about District 1, it's about across the county, so, okay? Y'all all right with that? All right, good.
Yeah.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on from department reports, go into G9, Emergency Services, in Mr. Hyde's report near the end, I think it's three, three bullet points back from the end, he references the EOP.
Oh, yeah.
That is just about ready to go forward, and it does, it will not require a public hearing to be adopted, but we would like to do a special meeting to have him brief you on that. I know that that was a huge issue.
It was very huge.
So, I'd like for, for you all to receive a briefing on, on that. It should be ready to go in April, if you all want to push it back to May, but I would like to have an opportunity for the board to be fully briefed on what the plan, what the plan is, and how the board works within the plan.
Yeah. If, if, I would, I'll tell you why, if y'all are okay with it, I like to push it back to May, and the reason being, I would like some of our other leaders, like the three towns, to be there to listen as well, so they know it's coming, because I tell you, when we had that ice storm, we all had to stick together, man, and, and everybody shares a part in that, so, and that, and that, and that ice storm, we could have a worse emergency than that coming up, you know, so that's the kind of thing. So, I would like our, and, and some of my leaders from the towns, as well as some emergency services, say, hey, this has been, this is going, you okay with that, Buddy? I mean, they probably update, and they probably won't know about it, but I'd rather them to be there to listen, because, let's face it, I'm not the expert, and, but I might be in the hot seat, but I'm smart enough to put experts around me, you understand? So, so let's push it for May if we would, work session, okay?
Okay.
All right, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for bringing it up. All right, following the agenda, the constitutional officers, I got Jane Brown, Sheriff Jones?
Good to be here.
Good seeing you, thank you for being here tonight. Ellen Myatt, Treasurer, she's not here to report, but we did, you know, we're gonna talk, we're not gonna talk about that tonight. We're getting, Ms. Myatt is getting ready to resign, she's, her last day, I believe, is June 30th, and this board has got to, and I think that Judge Teefy has sent the ball, is in his court, we very much are very aware about, we won't have a treasurer come July 1st, so, but I just want to share with the board, we know that's, that's very important to us, okay? And, and I do sometime another want to recognize Ms. Myatt for her years of service, and how she's been, she's done a great job as a treasurer, and this county's been blessed to have her. All right, Kristi Hudson, Commissioner of Revenue, seeing none, okay, Leanne Walters, okay.
She, wow, where is she at? Mr. Chairman, she, she has asked me to let you all know that she had a, a family event this evening that she needed to attend, but she gave you some updated case data.
Gotcha.
And also, you'll see in your correspondence file, I'm gonna go ahead and reference that, in your correspondence file, L4, you have a copy of the letter to the Attorney General, and my last conversation with her, she had received a phone call, she had returned the phone call, she had gotten, it was, they were in phone tag, but they have at least acknowledged it by reaching out to her.
Okay.
That's all I have.
All right, all right, thank you. All right, flip over, following the agenda, unfinished business, Mr. Costin, I'm gonna turn the first one over to you, Appointment to Planning Commission.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, based on your work session last week, staff proposes the following motion. The Nottaway County Planning Commission membership be set at 10 persons, with two persons representing each election district, and from within that number, one from each town. Furthermore, the Board of Supervisor, Supervisors representative will be a non-voting member. There is a, I believe that, given our, our current numbers, you all are just about there.
Okay. So, do we need a motion to reorganize the Planning Commission, but really no actions needed to take as far as?
Appointments at this time.
Appointments at this time.
Yes, sir. But if, if this is where you want to set, otherwise, right now, your list, your, your appointed number is, or your, your established number is 14.
Okay.
And we've, as you know, we've had difficulty getting to quorum on several occasions.
And so, established number's 14, and we're looking at it to do?
To drop it down to 10 with one non-voting board member.
Right, and, and in other words, I'm on the, on the Planning Commission, I will now vote, okay? They, the Planning Commission makes the recommendation, and then I'll vote with the board when they vote, whichever way it goes, after they give us the facts. What's, what's the board's thought, thought on that?
I'm good with it.
Reducing, reducing the appointed number to 10, with, with the, the board member representing on the Planning Commission, with the ability, they cannot vote, right, Mr. Vaughn?
I mean, two from each district. Two, well, yeah.
Oh, you're gonna make me do math. Okay, yeah, okay. Two from each district.
Yes.
Well, I think what he was saying is, one from the county, one from the town.
Yes, sir.
No.
It would be two from each district, with wherever the district, but at least, of the 10 people, three would be coming from the towns, one from each town.
Currently, District 2 has that.
What district don't have a town?
My district.
There you go.
You will be.
Oh, yeah.
Part of Crew will be in yours as well.
So, y'all got part.
But, still, I don't have a representative that's from the town.
Right, right, right.
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 Both of my, both of my people come from in the county, not in the town.
Yeah, I get you, I get you, okay. All right, so, I'm, I'm, Mr. Sherwood, you got any comment on this?
I'm in favor of it.
You're in favor of it? Okay, well, somebody, with that said, then, I'll be, I'll entertain a motion for that, to change that, if y'all want to do that tonight.
Is there a suggested motion?
It's in the memo, I just read it. Here you go.
I apologize.
That's okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move that the Nottaway County Planning Commission membership be set at 10 persons, with two persons representing each election, election district, and from within that number, one from each town. Furthermore, the Board of Supervisors representative will be a non-voting member.
All right, thank you, Mr. Roach, we got a motion, Mr. Roach, you heard that, can I get a second?
Second.
All right, got a second, Ms. Shackleton, any further discussion, any clarifications? All right, hear none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, it's passed, 5-0, thank you. Next one, appointment.
You still have an outstanding appointment, a vacancy on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Your current representation is one person from District 2, and this is, reflects after the, the new redistricting, one person from District 1, one person from District 2, and two people from District 5.
Okay, so, we, we missing one from District 3?
District 3.
And 4.
And 4.
The board will need to come forward with a, a recommendation to fill that vacancy, and that, that is effectively a recommendation to the Circuit Court.
Does any, do you have any suggestions right now, Ms. Simmons, or?
No, but I will.
Okay, all right, we'll leave it on unfinished business, so we need to get, get that one done. If you, yeah, and that's trouble, when we redistrict, it's called to figure out, well, you gotta get, you gotta get used to the district again, too, so, all right, thank you, Ms. Simmons.
You're welcome.
All right, all right, following that, that will remain on unfinished business, and we got the solid waste study contract.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the, the board, last month, we presented this contract to you, under separate cover, seeking your approval of the contract. Supervisor Shackleton had several questions, we formatted those questions, they were submitted to council, which had previously reviewed the contract, the answers were provided to you, also under separate contract, but they've also been, under a separate cover, but they've also been included in your board packet this evening. Staff does recommend to move forward with this study. And I will note that it's two phases, beginning in this fiscal year, concluding in the next fiscal year, so that the cost of that has been spread across, or proposed in the budget to be spread across those two fiscal years. But one of the items to be considered was recycling, a recycling program.
Okay. So we need a, this is, all right, board, we got, anything else you gotta say?
I'm just happy to take any questions.
Yeah, I got you. Does anybody got any comments? What, did you get your concerns answered, Ms. Sheriff?
Yes, and I didn't realize it was gonna have to be turned over to legal counsel for this kind of response. I thought they were pretty straightforward questions. But they did respond, and Sands Anderson notes that contract reflects the terms and conditions of the agreement with TRC and contains necessary provisions, so I'm satisfied with.
Well, thank you, okay. All right, anybody got any, I know, I know, Mr. Roy, you were an advocate of trying to get in this solid waste study, and it didn't take you long, what, three, four, five, 10 years?
I started in 19, and then took a seat in 20, so.
Okay, that's not too bad, John.
Four years, it's not bad. But I do want to say, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Shackleton, thank you. Those questions were spot on.
That's right.
Great catch, great catch. And if, if I may, Mr. Chairman, I just, I move the staff be directed to execute the contract with TRC for the conduct of a solid waste study as outlined, recognizing a one-month alteration in the timeline.
All right, I got a motion from Mr. Roy, who has been one of a strong advocate of getting this done. Can I get a second?
Second.
All right, got a second, Ms. Shackleton? Any board members got any further discussions, any more clarifications? All right, here and none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Very well, thank you very much, thank you, Ms. Shackleton. And John, thank you for, well, I ain't gonna thank you yet until the study comes out.
That's right.
You know, that's the trouble. I gotta say this, when you do a study, what are you gonna do with it once you get it? Anyway, yeah, okay. Crowd's thinking about that one. All right, going to the next one, Animal Shelter Report.
All right, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have in your packet a updated memo from me. And let me begin by saying, this item has not been carried on the agenda for some time, because basically, the report would have been the same, the plans were under development. We have the following to be able to report to you. The county has received 90% plans electronically, and they've been shared with the board, Burkeville Leadership and the CARES Group. Others, we have a way that others could access the plans if they, if they care to see them. It's a portal, they'll have to come to our office, and we can give them the instructions on how to access the portal at home. It's a, it's a website portal. Burkeville has already reviewed the planning and commented to the county's engineer on the project, and they advise, the engineer advises that those comments have already been addressed and incorporated in the ongoing update off of the 90% plan. The plan has been sent to the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality for their review. They have acknowledged that, and said that they might be able to turn around a checklist of planned elements that have been met within two weeks. So it's been about a week now. The site permitting process, though, remains variable outside the county or the design team's control. RRMM is also coordinating with the Virginia Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. This is the state agency in which the vet, the state veterinary's office is housed. And they also will be receiving a set of the bid plans to make sure that the construction is in accord with their requirements and their regulations. I think this is one of those unfunded mandates that was referred to earlier in terms of what the rules are that we have to follow. And of course, all the capital projects are being taken up in the current budget consideration. There were some questions about how did we move through the process? That next paragraph talks about that. I have been told, and my source of the information that I relied on was a background statement from RRMM. May have inadvertently attributed the first design to the CARES Group, not the county, but there's a little history there of how it's moved through the sizing process. Going forward, and this is an ideal anticipated timeline, barring any special meetings of the board to alter the timeline. April, bid plans are presented. That means that your next board meeting, you'll actually have the final, or near-final drawing. And let me say this about construction projects. You really never get to a final design that looks like what you built. It's, there's always adjustments. If you're in the construction trade, you know that, and you end up with something called a set of as-bills. But something that will go forward as a bid document would be available to you in April. And I have already reached out to five different construction firms, telling them to anticipate that this project is coming to bid sometime in April. May, we would receive bids, review, and initiate negotiations with the lowest and most responsive bidder. Ideally, June, award the contract, and actually begin site preparation work, which will involve utility service timing with the town of Burkeville, as well as the electric power company. Have to take any questions, you have. But since CARES has been really active in this, they sent, this was, they sent this after the packet was out. They were hoping to include their budget, their figures from a recent bingo event. They were not. But just so folks know, Notaway CARES has donations of $459,824.03. They have pledges of $5,000, for a total of $464,824.03. They've had an in-kind donation of $1,385. Of course, the donated land was appraised at $75,000, for total contributions of $541,209.03.
Wow. Yeah, they've done their part. Okay, all right. I do have, you might have a question, I'll yield to you.
I did want to add that this afternoon, I received an email from Stormwater Plan Reviewer at DEQ, and it included the completeness review letter. And I don't know if any of the other board members or staff were included on this, but I'll forward it.
Thank you, because I've not seen that.
Just came later this afternoon.
All right, wow, that's good. Mr. Roy?
Yeah, I got one thing of clarification. Here was, it says Burkeville staff reviewed it, and then it says that the project and had, you know, had some comments. Then it says those comments have already been addressed. Was that Burkeville saying that their concerns were addressed, or RRMM saying that they addressed Burkeville's comments?
RRMM said that they addressed Burkeville's comments. So I, a resubmission would be necessary to see if they are satisfied with how they were addressed.
Okay.
But that's, that's pretty much par for the course in site, site plan review.
Okay.
What would be, what would be the board's pleasure as far as when we put these things out to bid, and reviewing the bids or whatever? What would be the board's pleasure? Do you want me to appoint a committee, or do you want this whole board to sit down and look at it?
Whole board.
Whole board, okay, because a lot of money?
Yes.
A lot of money, okay. Well, we, we don't, we don't know it's a lot of money. We think it's gonna be a lot. Some might, they might trick us, fool us, anyway. Okay, so when I'm here, and then, Mr. Costin, come Maytime, we, you know, and I know that's near budget time, we gotta figure out.
Another special meeting.
Yeah. Mr. Vaughn, then, you know, then we're going to work, no, no, we got, we got a lot of business to do. We got a lot of stuff we want to get done. And this, this has gone a long time, guys, I'm telling you, I'm getting a lot of pressure, a lot of pressure. And we need to improve what our animal shelter, I get it. But we gotta be good stewards, as we heard tonight, too, as well. All right, anything else, Mr.?
That's all I have.
All right, that was a good report, and I appreciate that. The public needed to hear that. Now we move on to new business. The auditor for the RFP, Mr. Costin.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, you have in your packet a cover memo related to a contract, which is recommended to you to select the firm of Robinson Farmer Cox as the county's auditor for the next three years, with a two-year option. We went through the RFP process. I want you to know that we directly reached out to three companies recommended to us by Davenport, as well as our historic auditor, Robinson Farmer Cox. We actually received two replies, two responses, one from Robinson Farmer Cox, and one from UHYLLP out of Principally, Maryland, but they have an office in Northern Virginia. Interviews were conducted on March 2. The panel consisted of myself, Ms. Tomer, Heather Meyer with the school system, and Supervisor Shackleton. We reviewed the proposals in advance and prepared questions. After the interviews, the panel agreed that Robinson Farmer Cox was the best choice. Here are some of the reasons cited. They are familiar with Virginia local governments. They are familiar with the requirements imposed on Virginia local governments by the Auditor of Public Accounts for the Commonwealth of Virginia. They are familiar with Notaway County processes. And this is important, especially considering the pending retirement of the county treasurer, Ms. Myatt. And they have an internal quality control process that was impressive. They have provided this engagement contract, the, and it's a, it's a, it's a locked fee, flat fee. The, all the, all the necessary requirements are there for complying with the governmental accounting standards. So at this time, staff does recommend that you authorize the execution of this contract with Robinson Farmer Cox to serve as your auditor.
All right, any, any, any discussion? I think you did a lot of work on that, too, Ms. Shackleton, correct?
I did. Mr. Chairman, I did a, I guess my own personal due diligence, did an assessment, a comparative assessment of about a dozen minimum standards, including licensing requirements, independence requirements, peer reviews, CPE requirements, participation in quality improvement programs, there's just a few. And then some general observations and notes. Robinson Farmer Cox did come out as the lead candidate. And I think it's right, one of the most important things to note is that when we're looking at this transition in the treasurer's office, it's, I think, having an auditor on board who's so intimately familiar with the county finances is gonna be a great asset. The other firm, what was it, U, what was it?
UHY.
UHY. They noted in the interview, they understood about turnover audits when the treasurer leaves. But they advised the interview committee that year one of a new relationship with Notaway County would be time spent investing in the audit relationship, and they would become more efficient by year two. I don't think this time of transition, the treasurer's office really affords the county the luxury of spending a year investing in a relationship. But we need somebody that knows the county and knows our finances. So I agree with the recommendation of RFC.
Why don't you put that in a motion form, ma'am?
Yes. This is just.
That's okay. I think, might have it over here, too.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, I move the county administrator be authorized to execute the contract to audit the accounts of Not, the county of Notaway, Virginia, before us this evening, in order to retain Robinson Farmer Cox Associates as Notaway County's auditor in compliance with Virginia Code Section 15-2511.
Second.
All right, got a motion from Ms. Shackleton, a proper second. Any further discussion? All right, only discussion I would say is, I appreciate public comments and emails that we received. Ms. Kingery did her homework as well, and I appreciate that, and I appreciate you answering them, those emails as well. All right, any further discussion? Here and none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, next on the list, setting the date, place, and time for the VDOT public hearing. The secondary roads.
There's, there's no documentation in your packet, because that work session just occurred. But staff would recommend that you set May the 18th at 7:00 PM for the public hearing on the secondary road plan.
In the, in the general district courtroom, correct?
In the general district.
That's right. All right. You, you heard with the suggestion from staff, can I get a motion?
So move.
All right, got a motion.
I'm second that.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Roy to have that public hearing, May 18th, 7:00 PM, in this courtroom, general district courtroom. Got it properly seconded by Mr. Vaughn, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. Any further discussion? Here and none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, Ms. Tomer, thank you for coming tonight. Ms. Tomer's our Assistant County Administrator.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Notaway County Public Schools acts as the fiduciary agent for the Piedmont Alternative School. Previously, the funds were passed through to ANTIC, because that was the physical location of Notaway's program. That has since changed. It is now being housed at the school complex. Thereby, they need to house the funds in, at Central Office. So, in order to do that, an appropriation needs to be made. They need to distribute these funds in May to the other participating localities. So I ask that you would authorize a public hearing for the April board meeting for this budget adjustment.
Okay. All right. You hear Ms. Tomer's suggested motion, can I, can somebody, is any questions, any clarifications you want to ask her? All right, can I get a motion?
I move to authorize the advertisement of public hearing for the April regular board meeting to consider the appropriation of the Piedmont Alternative School funds.
Hey, thank you, thank you, Ms. Simmons, can I get a second?
I second that motion.
Hey, thank you, Mr. Vaughn. All right, got a, got a motion, and properly second. Any further discussion? Here and none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Tomer. Appreciate your work on that. Resolution Emergency Management Professionals Week. Hey, Mr. Hyde, come on back up to the podium, if you would.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good evening again. In front of you is, in your packet is a resolution that we just cast for your approval to recognize Emergency Management Professionals Week, which will be next week. So it's very timely at this board meeting. And as you can see in that resolution, it, a few other statements in there, you know, recognizing across the state, all emergency management professionals that deal with jobs like myself. That's a broad part of what we do. Obviously, emergency services is a little larger. But that's day-to-day more than the emergency management is planning for. The large ones, as we mentioned earlier. So it is in front of you, a couple of other statements within that resolution. So we thought it would be nice to have Notaway County recognize this resolution, along with a lot of other jurisdictions across the Commonwealth for next week.
Very well. Anybody would like to make a motion to adopt this resolution?
I so move.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion from Mr. Vaughn, a second. For Ms. Simmons to adopt this resolution. And Mr. Buddy Hyde, thank you so much for bringing this to our attention, I appreciate that.
Thank you for your vote.
Any further discussion? All right, here and none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Just throwing in a little comments, Steve Vaughn's got all these little comments he likes to throw in every once in a while. So, I know. So, you know, when we have our next budget meeting, we mentioned, and Mr. Vaughn, I thank you, and I think that a couple meetings, and Mr. Roy, and I, and Ms. Simmons, too, y'all have taken the lead on this Rec Association, about discretionary funds, maybe in this. And if people don't see these meetings, you need to tune in, because we have really good discussions. But one, one suggestion did come from us, and I'm not, I'm not putting Mr. Buddy Hyde on the, on point on this, but one had come in, and this maybe comes in, about giving bonuses to some of our emergency services. So would y'all just put that, I'm not asking, we're not talking about it anymore tonight, put that on your radar screen? Because, you know, you know, resolutions, like, but of course, you know, the debate, I heard somebody tell me, say, man, I'm a volunteer, don't give me any money. Then donate it to, you can donate where you want to donate it, you know. Anyway, any, any comments on that? I mean, I don't think we need to get in debate tonight, but I just want you to put that on your radar screen.
Only comment I would have, Mr. Chairman, is that it had been presented to me, and I believe I forwarded, maybe forwarded that to you or the whole board, that there appears to be a, an item out there that allows the volunteers to get up to $600 a year tax-free, $50 per month. I believe previously, we had had a fire chief, or former fire chief, ask for 250 per volunteer, but this is only for volunteers.
So it is in a state, is that state code?
It appeared to have been something that was adopted by the general seminar.
Oh, okay.
Do we know how many volunteers we have?
We haven't done any math yet. Yeah, well, I haven't done any math.
I was actually called off because he brung it up, so if I'd have known he was gonna bring it up, I'd have.
But I suspect as few volunteers, well, let me, that's not a fair statement. There's volunteers in a lot of organizations, so I apologize. But I'm talking about volunteers in the fire departments and the emergency squads. You think it's a lot of them? I don't think it's many.
Definitely more in Blackstone, definitely more in Blackstone.
Right, right.
You have 50. 50 plus the young people in Blackstone.
Okay, I don't think you're gonna have that in Burkeville.
You might not have it in Burkeville, but you'll have 15.
No, no, we won't have 15. No. No. Mr. Mr., you 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 listen to Mr. Shoot, he ain't got 15. Anyway, all right, well, I'm not saying anything tonight. I'm just saying, let's keep that on your radar screen. Okay. Number five, J5, this was amendment to the to the agenda, and it was a resolution as far as opioids go. Mr. Costin, would you lead that, please?
I'd be happy to.
Okay.
This is, you you received under separate cover this memorandum regarding this settlement resolution. The board took favorable action to participate in the in a opioid settlement in November of 2021 involving certain named companies. This is the same issue, only it's a different set of companies. In brief, any monies available in Notaway County are greatly enhanced by its participation in the settlement, as well as participation of all localities across Virginia. The more that participate, the more money that comes in for the state and for individuals with individual localities within the state. Now, each settlement is different in terms of pay payment amounts, payment schedule, and what you can do with the funds. A suggested motion follows that for the reasons cited in the resolution, which you have before you as well, Notaway County approves the participation in the proposed settlement of opioid related claims against the named companies. Moving for the adoption of the resolution and the county administrator be authorized to execute all documents necessary to effectuate the county's participation. I'm available to take any questions. County attorney is very well versed in this issue as well, because much of it is being worked out of the attorney general's office.
Okay. Any any questions, any comments, color for issue? Sounds like we need this to get on the bandwagon?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I'm.
I understand you don't like to leave money on the table. I think I've heard that a couple of times.
I don't like leaving money on the table. Well, let's let me let me back up, and I should, it's not always about money, but that 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 opioid was is of crisis, okay? That opioid addiction is a very serious thing, and 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 I think it's serious through Southside Virginia, western part of Virginia, all over Virginia, but really, western part of Virginia really got hit hard with that. So but it is a serious thing, so, yeah, I'm entertaining a motion for the accept that resolution.
So move.
All right, I got a motion.
I second that.
Okay, I got a motion for Mr. Roy to accept the the resolution that was presented by Mr. Costin, and I got a proper second from Mr. Vaughn. I appreciate it, sir. Any further discussion? Discretion? Any further disgusting discussion? Woo! Any further discussion? All right, here and none? All in favor, signify by saying aye. All opposed, same sign. Ms. Tomer, would you present the consent items to us, ma'am, please?
Before I do that, I did bring the opioid settlement figure thus far for the county. So including the three distributions that you're fixing to consider in the consent calendar, the county's contribution thus far would be $39,645.40.
Right, okay.
If you if you would indulge, like we did back in January, and for the same reasons, it's a pretty extensive list, but I would like to separate items one through 12 from the very last item, if we could. Before you, there are two budget adjustments reflecting three separate distributions of opioid settlement funds. You have a reimbursement from the Department of Social Services for the Child Services Act, grant funding for the law enforcement for safety equipment. There are insurance proceeds for a damaged sheriff's vehicle, grant funding from the Library of Virginia for records preservation in the Circuit Court Clerk's Office, two disbursements from the Dolly Parton Imagination Library funding, grant funds for the school that will be used for a community schools coordinator position. There is a refund of a waste management account, a bill that was paid twice, a second time in error, obviously, and a local law enforcement block grant to support law enforcement efforts. That would be items one through 12, if you would consider action on those, separate from the last.
Okay. So what was Ms. Tomer's asking is that we could take items, take have a motion for items one through 12 on the consent count?
Yes, sir.
Entertaining a motion? Does anybody got, you got a suggested motion in front of you?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the consent items K1 through K12, continuous for approval.
Okay, I got a motion, Mr. Roy. Can I get a second?
Second.
Got a second from Ms. Simmons. Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Here and none? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, number 13, that's a bad number. That's a bad number to start out with.
For the last item, this is an identical document to the equipment lease that was provided to you all in January, with the exception being the named piece of equipment. This lease is for a 2023 Caterpillar excavator, and this is the second piece of the three pieces of equipment that we had planned on leasing for the landfill in the fiscal year 23 budget. They are five-year leases, and this particular piece of equipment is $4,861 a month.
All right, somebody who's good at math.
That's what I was going to ask.
Okay. Give me that number, give Ms. Tomer.
$4,861.38.
All right, I'm just, we round that thing up.
Times 60.
I got to figure out if it's cheaper to buy one.
Well, we've been buying.
I know, I know, I know, I know. I just, just, I'm just doing math.
Well, just for just for informational purposes, we we have bought, that's what we, the equipment.
And we went to leasing because?
To save the cost on repair and maintenance, in which the other piece of that is every time a piece of equipment goes down, we get behind of the landfill.
So in 60 months, it's 6, 56,000?
Oh, no, that's 12 months.
That's 56,000, 12 months.
4681 a month, is that what you said?
4861.
4861.
38.
That's a, and, what?
58, 332. I counted it.
That's for 12 months, and this is a?
60 months.
Five-year lease.
Five-year lease.
What times?
60.
The the whole lease document is in your package.
240.
It's like 240.
So it's close to $300,000 piece of equipment. What is this piece of equipment?
An excavator, and I believe the last piece of equipment we purchased was well over $400,000. It's in the same line of use.
So, yeah, all right, I get you. So we don't, we don't bought this before, so it's it's really coming out even, close to even Steven, you know?
We would like to think we'll be far ahead in the end.
I got you.
The wear and tear on these machines.
Terrible.
Just because of the conditions they're in.
Right.
It's awful.
See, and we talked about it in the budget meeting, I mean, I'm shifting, excuse me, Mr. Costin. So we talked about in the budget meeting, you know, you know, sort of buying vans and stuff for social, social workers, we talked about maybe renting and to see, and we, can, you probably hadn't got to that yet, but can we rent from Department of General Services?
Lease.
Ah, thank you, lease. I keep saying it, y'all correct me every time, lease. Can we lease from Department?
I I don't know that yet. I haven't called it.
Probably not. That's the state for you.
I mean, we can purchase from Department of General Services. I don't know what.
Right.
You know, I mean, I'm hoping for the best on that scenario.
Um, what do y'all want to do?
Do we?
It's, I mean, but but we got to, I mean, we we got to have the equipment.
We got to have the equipment. So the only question I have, I I heard what we paid in the past. What is the current tag for one of these units now?
I'd like to know that, too, compared to what the lease would be, do you think?
I don't have that figured. We could certainly get it from the sales rep.
I think we probably, it's a big number, so probably to have all the information would be helpful.
I think we'll come out of here if we lease.
I do know that in the past, the the last piece of equipment is the only one I can really, you know, reference, knowing full-fledged what we've done with it. The bulk of the warranty expired after one year, and the conditions that they're in that one year wasn't anything compared to what it's been through and what we've had to repair and replace.
Oh, I didn't think about that. When you purchase it after a year, whatever happens, because and you, I mean, you're putting it through the wrinkle of the landfill.
Yes.
That's a good point.
Unless you buy an extended warranty, which is going to have an increased price tag on it.
Right. Ms. Ms. Tomer, if we table this, are we putting the landfill people in some kind of bind out there?
No, there's there's a piece of equipment on site that's been pieced together, for lack of a better word, until we can get this in place.
So so I'll tell people, so we can make them, we got to have the right information to make a formidable decision. I mean, so I would, I would, it sounds like I'm getting the pulse of the board here a little bit. Y'all would like to table it and just see what that number is?
Well, I'd also like to see how many years of service is expected out of a new piece of equipment, along with the actual cost of the equipment right now, because we're talking 377 if you purchase after five years, 85,000.
You know, it's so hard, I mean, and I'm picking on Sheriff back, and he ain't had nothing to do with it. It's so hard to budget for vehicles, and the reason being, you know, you go three or four years, you don't have anything. I'm talking about vehicles now, but big, big piece of equipment, all of a sudden it breaks down, and then all of a sudden, hey, ah, we didn't see this one coming, we need 400 some thousand dollars. That's that, that's the thing that you deal with. So when you lease, you 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 know what the payment is. And and the sheriff, like, you know, it's, it's like, I mean, he's got to have vehicles that, you know, but he don't know if his, if next year, he's going to have 200,000 on a, on a car, or if he going to have 110,000, but he, he needs something that's good, that he can, he can catch the bad guy.
Right.
You know, so if you would be willing to do a little homework for us on that, Ms. Tomer?
I will, but if I may add.
Okay.
With the situation of of not knowing the results of the Soloway Study that we're going to receive, you know, we're required by DEQ to have a main piece of equipment and a backup piece of equipment.
Wait.
For certain.
Okay.
So we're limping on both pieces of those equipment currently.
Okay.
So short of, you know, being almost forced to make a purchase.
Right.
This would at least give you the opportunity for a relatively short-term lease that we can get out of.
Right.
There's terms, of course, we can get out of, depending on what the outcome of the study would be.
If you don't mind, then, I don't think we have to wait to the next, we got a next meeting to vote, but if you find out information, you get Mr. Costin, send us an email, don't respond to it, just absorb it, and that'll give us, helps us make a decision next meeting, if you would.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if we have to wait because we have the budget sessions.
Oh, we might be able to do it in the budget session.
Might be able to put a motion forward in the budget session.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Roy. Good, good, good thought. All right. Thank you. Very, very well. All right. You got correspondence and informational items on it, one through four. Anybody got any comments or something they want to add to that, or they don't understand? Okay. Going with that, Mr. Costin, you got the floor, sir, for county administrator.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Routine minutes attended, lots of meetings, obviously, concerning the budget. The request for audit, proposals for audit services, you're familiar with where that stands. The energy efficiency project continues. They have turned to duct cleaning and punch list items. The pulley house, as previously noted, has been removed, and the infill and grading has been completed. There will be interviews tomorrow with two firms selected for interviews based off of five health benefits consulting firms having responded to the RFP. You'll recall that we did not get the services out of the recruiter for benefit, for health benefit services that we had expected, and so we have terminated that contract and moved on. The, we'll be setting interviews for both, for the building official, I've spoken with Mr. Mr. Bowden, the chairman, to be a participant in that because of his background in facilities management. We had an interim solution, hoping to get through the the budget process, to have a person covering the child, the Comprehensive Child Services Act. That coordinator, the temporary interim coordinator, has had to resign due to personal issues, and I am working with the Director of Social Services and her staff to cover us in in that area. Again, the questionnaire, which kicked off the personnel policy manual, that price tag is a one, one figure. Sands Anderson is a special project on that. The rationale, again, for doing that was the entity that would have to defend you in a personnel matter might be better served if they actually wrote the personnel manual. And I have conveyed to the board concerns regarding the retirement of Notaway County Treasurer Ellen Myatt to the Chief Judge of the Circuit Court via the clerk, Ms. Jane Brown, and that communication and summary report of the response is contained in an email chain, which I have followed in in the staff report. I believe the chairman already spoke to this. The judge has made it clear that there's really no directive in the code. It's very much his, his call as to how the appointment is made, and he is making inquiries into the larger community, seeking someone who would take that position in the interim. Speaking of the judge, received this correspondence from him, and I want you to know that since the correspondence has come in, and almost immediately since the correspondence came in, I have been in contact with Ms. Watchers, who he designated as his point of contact, as well as the, our new superintendent for maintenance on the complex. But the judge would like to have some updated video equipment in the courtroom of the Circuit Court. We have looked over there today, how it could be done. We are actually, will be meeting with the judge on Tuesday and making sure we understand what his expectations are. It's it's a little cumbersome. They have one monitor that's on a cart, and there are some legal concerns about the jury and the defendant, as well as the court observers being able to see what's presented on a monitor about gay dick, and he's looking for a little bit more of a modern situation. And we'll be bringing, bringing more to you as that develops.
I guess I, point of clarification, so if the camera's setting out to seeing the public, what, who's looking at the, not, not, the sheriff is not involved in it, it's not, it's not that type of thing, is it? Like, who's monitoring?
It's not, it's, I think what you're talking about is like a.
Magistrate.
Video magistrate hearing? No, this is actually in the Circuit Court, where the judge would prefer to be able to have the jury, the defendant, in the, in the, the audience, all be able to see the evidence that's being presented.
Oh, I got you. Okay, okay, all right. I'm.
Basically, do some, like, something like this.
I'm with you. They, right. So you don't have to, okay, my, okay, I got you, okay. Mr. Vaughn, we need to move on with that, and go ahead and do what he's asking.
Yeah, so I guess we just, yeah, okay, I hear you. I mean, the judge did use carnival-like atmosphere.
I saw what we do there. Yeah. Well, you, well, we don't really need a motion, because you need a, you need to see, you just want us to give?
I'm letting you know what's going on, but this is something I'm working on to keep the judge happy. I second your motion, Mr. Vaughn, but are you saying you you need something different?
What we need is a plan on how we're going to be able to respond to the judge, and that, of course, will equate to some money.
Okay.
And see if we have it in this year's budget or or not.
We'll wrap it up in that.
Mr. Vaughn, you withdrawing that?
Okay, yeah, you're not, no, no motion right now, it's not needed. Sounds like it's a little.
But we need to move on with that.
Yeah, I got you. So getting a pretty sense of the board, we'll move forward then. Okay. But let's back up here a little bit. Let's, let me get, put this train back in reversal a second. So let me tell you, there's certain things to keep me up at night besides the neighbor's dog, okay? I'm I'm concerned that, and and I think Ms. Shackleton shared this with me, when Ellen Myatt leaves the last day in June, we don't need nobody coming there July at first, we need somebody in there May.
May or June, by June 1, yes.
You see what I'm saying? So I hope, how do you convey that understanding to everybody? I mean, do you think he's thinking that way, Ted?
Very much. He is aware of the situation. Because obviously, he's aware of the situation, because he's one of two recipients of the resignation letter.
Okay, all right. That, you know, April, that's the next month. I mean, we're getting here. You with me? It's starting to keep me up at night. I'm worried, concerned about it. And it's a very important time of the year. So, anyway, all right, okay. All right. Is that all your points, sir?
That's all I have, unless y'all have questions for me.
None. None. Yes, I'm?
I do have some clarification. It's three issues here. First, this wasn't under new business. It wasn't under old business. It wasn't in your port. And I asked for documents in reference to an ongoing issue, compliance forms, and I've yet to receive those.
We're pulling those together. We are actively pulling those together.
Okay. The second item was I asked for some payable documents in reference to another issue, and I haven't received those either. Okay. The third item was that I asked to have concerns about legal expenses placed on the agenda. And that was not placed on the agenda. Basically, what I was asking, so we could get control of what we are spending legally. Now, this has got nothing to do, this is not Sands Anderson's fault. Basically, what I was looking for was to have a conversation about how do we better control the expenses. I mean, we budgeted 100,000. When it's been over 170,000 again, not, this has nothing to do with Sands Anderson. Basically, I was looking to see if we could set up something where there was, we could note the items that staff wanted to bring forward to the attorneys and have it presented to the board for the board approval. I mean, we gotta get a control on some spending here. But there again, that item was not put on the agenda.
Mr. Roy, and I apologize to you for that. Can, if we go to the, how about, would you be okay with it? Would you open it up with, you know, as we do comments and members of the board, which is next? And you'll be, you're first on the list. Would you be willing to bring that up then? Would that be okay?
Well, I think what we need is, because when I asked for that, there's certain information I wanted the board to have, so.
Before we talk about it?
Yes. I just wanted to note that, I mean, I think there's certain things that, I mean.
You heard it here tonight.
Yeah. I mean, we have got to get control of our spending. And now, with what's happening to Tyson Foods and everything, there's some major concerns out there. And I mean, I mean, we need to address these items. I mean, they just cannot continue on. I mean, we still got, what, three months left in this budget? How much are we gonna spend illegally? And again, again, not to their detriment, this is not.
Well, anybody got any comment on that? Anybody want to say something?
I think he's got a legitimate concern. We do need to look at this and see what we can do to control the spending.
What I think we're gonna have to be careful with, and I hear you, and for complete transparency, I had to contact, but I, and I guess I'm leaning now on Andrew over there. I had, I had to contact Faith on a subject. I gotta, and I'm okay with saying, the chairman contacted Sands Anderson for this reason. But I have to be careful that reason doesn't necessarily, like, if it's, can I just say personnel? Or do I mean going deeper? I'm trying to, I struggle with that.
I think it's up to you. And certainly, you know, if you're going to an attorney in confidence, it's important that that confidence be protected.
Yeah, got you. Okay, okay. Right, that, right. I gotta, I gotta be ca, that's right. But, but you're not worried about being that deep. You just want to know that I made the phone call? And we, and the county got charged for it?
Well, that's right. I mean, there should be a clear explanation of who called, for what reason.
Got you.
Not specifically who, maybe. But we need to understand, I mean, this county can't afford to have an attorney on speed dial. I mean, just bottom line.
Okay. I got you. I hear you.
We can't do that.
The bottom line is, the county cannot afford.
You tell them folks out there that I ain't talking about that.
But I will say this. When I, if I'm chairman and I'm having a meeting, I will not have this meeting without our attorney present.
Regular board, meaning I have no issues.
I gotta have that.
That's right.
Because I've gotten myself in trouble, and Steve Vaughn got a big loose mouth, okay? And I need somebody to say, shut up, Steve. And they've been good to me about that, so.
I've been telling you that for years, but you haven't listened.
I don't know. I deserve that one. I deserve that.
Mr. Chairman, to your point, it ain't the meetings I'm concerned about.
Okay, it's the other, other stuff.
It's the other stuff. That's what I'm concerned about.
And then we have, things are different. We live in a society now that that you almost have to have a lawyer now.
I'm not saying get rid of it.
People want to sue. People want to disrupt. It's different now than it was, say, 10 years ago.
Yeah. Reverend Jim brought it up tonight when he was, when he was discussing.
So, we need to recognize that. And some of the same people who are talking about legal fees, legal fees are someone, some of the same people who are bringing about litigation. So, you can't have it both ways.
Point taken. All right. With, definitely a strong item on the budget. We, we, I want, that's on, we're meeting about budget Monday. And we're meeting about two things Monday, right?
LRA.
LRA and the budget. Okay. Mr. Roy, you have my word that that would be a discussion in that meeting.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
With that said, do you have any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Supervisor Simmons, you have anything?
Yes, I do.
Okay, thank you.
And I want to get a, give a copy to each of the board members. I see that this was brought out tonight by one of our constituents on Maguire Woods. And I promised last month that I would come back with a letter from Maguire Woods.
Okay, I passed it there.
Yeah, we got it.
Everybody has one?
I'll take, I'll take this. Thank you, ma'am.
And it was written to Notaway County Board of Supervisors. Reference Maguire Woods LLP, representation of Notaway County. Dear Honorable Members of the Notaway County Board of Supervisors, we have learned of your concern regarding the possible conflict of interest in matters concerning Notaway County. We take this opportunity to describe the difference between the law firm Maguire Woods LLP and the consultant firm Maguire Woods Consulting LLC, MW Consulting. Two legal distinct entities, two legally distinct entities. MW Consulting offers public affairs services to its clients through both lawyers and non-lawyers. Maguire Woods Consulting focuses on providing full-service lobbying services and issues advocacy services consistent on high-level media relations, grassroots mobilization, advocacy, and through third parties and organizations with influential, independent legal advice to its clients. We are lawyers for Maguire Woods LLP, an international law firm that provides a great host of legal services to our clients through licensed attorneys. We counsel a wide range of clients from large publicity trading companies to public entities. Our legal counsel steers clear of direct appeals to legislative decision-makings. That is what Maguire Woods Consulting does. Instead, the law firm focuses on counseling clients through existing or potential legal landscapes. While we consider the business ramification of client action, we always do a thorough legal lens. The key function of the law firm is to provide legal advice to its clients. It is not uncommon for law firms to have legal and consulting components. Here that these components are separate entities offering two types of services. And because they are separate entities offering different services, there is no conflict of interest. Under ethical rules applicable to lawyers and those providing legal services, which MW Consulting does not provide, there is a conflict only if the representation of one client would be directly adverse to another client. Indeed, the law firm adheres to strict protocols to ensure it can identify latent conflicts before assuming any new representation. These protocols are followed before providing Notaway County an engagement letter for potential representation. There is concern that Maguire Woods LLP is barred from representing Notaway County because MW Consulting represents Prince Edward in similar subject matter. This is an accurate characterization. Although this may be commonality in terms of subject matter, the very nature of the two representations finds the difference. While MW Consulting advocacy may offer media or legislative regulatory-based solutions to broad problems, Maguire Woods LLP advocacy focuses on identifying and resolving distinct legal issues while considering other ramifications. Simply put, the engagement agreements are different. The nature of the services rendered are different. The individuals providing the service are different. And of course, the entities offering the service are different. The only commonality is non-ment clarity. Less there be any doubt, Maguire Woods LLP and MW Consulting are not the same entities. They have different clients, offer different capabilities, and do with different professionals. The board should rest assured that no conflict with interest of Maguire Woods representing Notaway County. And I stand by what the things that I said for the county, I'm looking out for the county. And if someone approaches you with something that's gonna help your county, if you think I'm gonna turn it down and not try to help Notaway County, then you're wrong. Because I stand behind the citizens of Notaway County. And you're talking about how much money it's gonna cost. How much money is it gonna cost when Crew has no water? Thanks, Chairman.
Okay. Yes, yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Mr. Vaughn, do you have any comments?
No.
Ms. Shackleton?
No.
All right. The only comment, it's not a real comment, is I want to tell the citizens of something that's been happening. And I want to tell the board a situation I got in this week. And I may need help from you. Well, I do need help from you. Ain't no may need to it. So, we have great concerns on the, on the western part of the county. You know, we got Blackstone Medical Group on, with Blackstone, and you got Crew Medical Group. And Central and Burford Medical Group, they can't, they can't keep a doctor, okay? So, and we had, heard rumblings of possibly it closing up. And so, that greatly concerned me, so we can have medical care on all, all throughout the county, you know? Because not everybody can drive the Ritz. Not anybody can drive the Fable. And so, so, I asked, I said, well, who is the director? And it turned out to be, I mean, director of the board of Central is Sharon Harrop, who also steps. So, you might recognize that name. So, I asked Mr. Roy, I said, would you reach out to her? Because, and, and, well, let me back up. Actually, the mayor of Burford came to me first, okay? Brian Welch. And he goes, Steve, I'm worried about it. I said, okay. So, we went and met with him and had a very productive meeting. She brought the president, the director of Central, brought the clinical director in there. And I believe the other lady was maybe head of nursing? I can't remember. But anyway, Shannon was the name. Well, in that conversation, it, you know, it came up that that building is old, okay? Now, if, I'm from Burford, so I know, I didn't, it wasn't open when I, but it used to be a movie theater in Burford. Mr. Hamilton, you remember that? Okay. Well, that's about where it's at. I mean, you know, so that building is old. And they have great concerns because Dr. Donovan owns the building, and he wants to sell it. And if the new buyer buys it, they're not gonna keep it up. And they did a cost analysis, and it's gonna take about 400-some thousand dollars to upgrade that building. And they're not gonna put money in it. Now, don't leave out of here thinking Central's gonna close up. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm trying to do is try to get a hit of the game and see if we can find another place to build a medical group, you know, or something. And, and I appreciate Mr. Roy lining that up for me. Okay. Well, when the meeting was over, and I'm gonna bring that up, that subject up with the Economic Development Group and say, you know, is it another place we can put it? Can we put it where the old Burford Market used to be? What, how much does the land cost? What do we need to do? We have got to be proactive. If we don't, I, Burford can't take another hit after losing Bradshaw's, Burford Market. You know, that stuff, the next thing you know, you lose your town. Okay. So, that's sort of, so Central's very important, and I want to form a partnership with them. And whether it's a, you know, public-private partnership. And basically, they told us, they said, you find the land, we'll, we'll get the developer, we'll build it. Okay. That made me feel good. All right. Well, when I, when the meeting was over with, I started standing up, and Sharon Harrop said, you need to sack back down. I said, okay, whoa, whoa, whoa. So, I said bye to our guest. And, and she said in that meeting, she said, I know I came to y'all for 200-some thousand dollars from Arbor money. And she said, Steve, and this is to build tiny houses for the homeless. And in my understanding, and I appreciate Spike Zumber, did a lot of homework, though, that, that, the plan was to put it right behind Sheets, okay? Well, they found out there was so much in maintenance. And I said, okay. She goes, so, now I'm asking for, I think it was 75,000 dollars. And I said, so what's your new plan? And she says, well, I like to maybe build apartment, have apartment complex there, but. And I said, well, define homeless, you know? And that sounds, that's a strange question. Define homeless. Some people say homeless if you stay in a hotel. She says homeless is when you have nowhere else to go. Now, you may not even have a vehicle. You have nowhere else to go, and they have a procedure in place for that's happening. Okay. So, that was Tuesday. And Tuesday night, she had her board meeting in Prince Edward. I said, what is your struggle? Okay? What is your struggle? She said, every county is waiting for the other county. Nobody's doing nothing. I said, Sharon, you have my word, because I know the pulse of this board right here. I know how much homeless and people who need money means to every one of you. Ms. Simmons, Mr. Vaughn, John was sitting beside me, and I know, Ms. Shackleton, how you feel. And I also know that we were gonna put 200,000 in before. We hadn't got that far yet. Now, listen to this. She's not asking for the old Arbor money. She's asking for the new Arbor money, which is 2026, okay? And I said, well, Sharon, what if, if nobody else goes? She said, then the plan is blown. You can spend the money where you want to. But I need to hear you say, would you earmark it? And I said, okay, I'm speaking for the board now. Now, I know, I normally don't, I need to get permission from y'all. But she went in a public meeting at Prince Edward and said, Notaway will be the leader and will do this. Now, I know for a fact I did not have your approval, but I'm asking you tonight, would you vote? Put a motion on the floor to earmark at 75,000 dollars as a simple request. And I would ask you to pass that, and that is what we're gonna do, and we're gonna stick with it. And we're gonna be a leader with the, and let other counties follow. Now, if they don't follow, then we don't do it.
I put it on the floor.
All right. I got a motion, Ms. Simmons. Got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Mr. Costin, earmark 75,000 dollars for the homeless that was asked by Sharon Harrop. Thank you very much. Thank you, board. I apologize to you if I spoke out of turn, but I knew you. And I think as part of my job is to know the pulse of this board. Okay? Thank you. With that said, I'm looking for a motion to go into closed session.
I don't have it in front of me. I apologize. I think it's right here.
I have it. Closed session, motion to enter closed session. I move that the Board of Supervisor, Notaway County, Virginia adjourned in the closed meeting pursuant to the Code of Virginia 2.2-371187 for consultation with legal counsel and briefing by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body, specifically regarding the personnel matters and land use regulatory enforcement. And 2.2-371181, assignment and performance of Pacific County employees, specifically relating to personnel matters now pending in county administration.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Simmons. Can I get a second?
Second.
Further discussion before I, before I go into closed session? We don't know, we'll take action after. I appreciate the public coming here tonight and listening to this and dragging through it. I know it's a lot of time, a lot of hours out your day, but you are taxpayers, and we're very thankful we have you here. So, y'all have, if you just don't stay, have a safe trip home.